Reaching the hour sixty o'clock, we will um start the meeting. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty eighth two thousand twenty five revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair and not all items listed may be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee recorded and will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to the website W W W dot B H R D dot org. Um and we will start with a roll call. Steve Manin Chair absent. Sarah Borla.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
William Fields.
Here.
William Boyd.
Here.
Andrew Potter.
Present.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Allison Reed.
I see her. She's on the way to say Allison, can you unmute?
There, okay, here. Sorry.
The room appears to be, there you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Andy, do you have any comments on the um on the minutes?
No, I don't.
I didn't know if you was speaking up when I was. I will move to a vote, Steve Ben absent, Sarah Borla.
Hi.
Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields.
Here.
William Boyd.
Or yes.
Andrew Potter.
Aye.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Allison Reed.
Here.
Sarah Tenetti.
Yes.
I will pass over the treasurer's report and I will um uh move the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Peter, what do you have for us?
Um we'll start with uh Ariel.
We've got some things from the high school.
Uh well, good afternoon, everyone. It's uh it's quite a meeting. Um starting off with the the good news. I'm very happy to say that Senior Assassin is underway. Um it is the magnificent reason of why I have to have these on me right now and for the foreseeable future until our admins say that we don't have to.
Should you put them on now?
Uh no, no, I think I'm not very safe right now. I was wearing them outside.
Yeah.
Um it's, in my opinion, the best game to celebrate the end of four years of high school. Um it's a really simple game with the the smallest water guns you've ever seen, Reich Neon. And then some floaties that have become the rage of our senior class. You can never see anyone without them. And the people who aren't participating have made it their mission to disturb less participants. So far, from when I wrote this, there was eight eliminations, but there have been four more now. And I have had two of those. Hopefully more, hopefully more. I will not lay out my plans here. Um as far as I know, spreadsheets have been made, floaties have been stolen. And I do worry for my safety the second I leave this building. So all has been good fun and I hope I win this year.
Did I hear the confirmation at the top of my Washington?
Maybe, man, maybe. Admins were really a good tricky button. Um other is that it's very warm outside. Springtime sun is finally here and the orbit temperatures have everyone monumented in far better spirits. Mine is incredibly lucky to live in a wonderful area and it is a full, full moon at all. Students are enjoying lunch outside with their friends and can be seen taking outdoor Frankenberg history monologues. Moving on, um we didn't want to put this down in challenges, so we just called it the in-between. Um AP tests, AP tests have finally entered the final stretch and AP classes are at the end, um starting next week and lasting until the second week of May. Monument students will be taking a wide range of AP tests, AP being um short for Advanced Placement Exams. Um AP exams are mixing as it corresponds to the College Board AP Program for which Monument offers quite a variety of these classes. Um decided to put the AP exams in the in-between of challenges and good news because there is a very intense prep period that comes before the exams. And the difficulty of the exams themselves are really challenging and stressful for both the students and the teachers. However, the exams are a good accumulation of a year of your hard work and all the time and effort that you put into the AP courses. So good luck to everyone who has an exam coming up. I just barely managed to escape one. As for challenges. We had a somewhat difficult time coming up with challenges, but we did find one. And it's more of the bathroom situation at the high school. I specifically brought up the boys' bathroom as has been an annoyance to quite a lot of people for some time now. One thing that we've noticed is that the bathroom keeps getting closed frequently enough to people say, oh, the bathroom's closed again. Great. A large amount, there's also quite a large amount of people who decide that it is a great place to take a break and use drugs and vape. And that does, that is not limited just to the boys' bathroom. And another is that we feel like there is somewhat of a lack of privacy because there is constant adult supervision in the bathroom. So you'll see someone in administration or another adult have to go in and just ensure that nothing is happening, but to those of us who aren't up to anything particularly nefarious. Um it feels a bit like we don't have quite as much privacy as we would like. And another thing is things are broken for quite a bit of time before it's fixed. Uh thankfully, there's enough stalls and enough things to go around, but it is noticeable when a faucet stays broken for more than a week, you just don't know what to do. We do understand that high school boys aren't the cleanest, that are the best role followers. However, um it does feel like the bathroom situation isn't getting much better and that's for both genders. There. That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh Christopher, thanks, David.
Sure. Thank you. It was a um episode of The Office where uh Jim was playing cranks on uh White. He put uh White's desk in the bathroom. Not sure if that should do it, Ariel or. White sat down, the phone rang. He picks up the phone and then one of the guys walked out of the stall. Anyway, um I'm going to respond uh or just add some more um information around that. Um Ariel, you said it's been an annoyance to quite a lot of people. Definitely agree. It's an annoyance to me too, frankly. The school administration is vigilant um around bathrooms at high travel times during the day. Uh first thing in the morning during uh pardon, before and after lunches, that sort of thing. We have vape sensors in the bathrooms and when we receive an alert, we review our video records, uh investigate students, conduct searches. Uh institute consequences and sanctions as appropriate and notify parents. It pursues, it's a problem. Biggest reason that a bathroom maybe closes due to vandalism and when there is vandalism, we follow these same procedures with regard to um looking at the cameras, investigating students, et cetera, et cetera. Um some of the kids may feel that there's, there's um you know, a lot of uh um supervision in bathrooms. I can guarantee you, we're not in the bathrooms um very frequently. I rarely ever in a bathroom. The other guys will go in just, oh, are we okay? And make their way out or maybe a a teacher or son will do that on occasion. But certainly not stationed in the bathrooms and only walk in to check on things when we're looking for some, someone, something. Or if our spidey sense tells us uh that something may be at fault. Um certainly an ongoing issue at Monument and frankly, in all the schools where I've worked. Um it's good to have the vape sensors um and um anyway. I, you know, um Ariel, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought this up because it also occurs to me that this is a great idea. Not a great idea, but a great challenge to bring to uh student adult advisory board. It's, it's, you know, really hard for us to try and solve this, you know, um. And so then having the students involved in brainstorming and coming up with some answers we could take um hopefully in this situation. So I'll be talking to uh Sue Nuttman, who's uh the advisor for SAB and see how we can get it on the agenda and start working on it.
What, what's, what are the disciplinary consequences of being caught on camera vaping for example?
So there's not on camera vaping because there's no cameras inside the bathroom. So all we can do is reasonable suspicion, right? If the, if the face sensor goes off at one o'clock and there was only one student that went in there. Hello, um and and we do a search um and uh but we only, our uh evidence only needs to, evidence as it were, only needs to rise to reasonable suspicion so we can enforce consequences whether or not we find anything on the student person. Um so it really depends. Um you know, suspension, certainly. Um you, you know, we, we, we're not trying to be suspension heavy, so we try to figure out how we want to do this. Is this going to be an in-school? We prefer to have it in-school. Um they're with us, you know, we can help them get work done, all that sort of thing. But um repeat offenders, suspension goes up, right? We also um do um a balance of that and sort of a starter approach where we offer classes through our council. Um and um, you know, here, we'd be happy to do um this many days, let's call it two days suspension. If you would do these classes here because you've been a repeated offender. And if the, if the family refuses, well, the other side of it is if you refuse, we're looking at four days. You know, it's that kind of approach. Is that it's your question?
Yeah. What about phones? Are phones used in the bathrooms?
Phones are used everywhere.
I know every version.
Right, Ariel?
Are we? Is it a losing battle against phones?
No, I'm going to say no right away because we continue to hear that it's so much better than it was, okay? So there's that. Um but um our enforcement, I would just say, has gotten um lax across the year. Kids don't have them out all over the place. Kids don't really have them out. They'll have them underneath, let's say, maybe there's a kid in the senior lounge who's got one underneath his table or something like that. Or there's somebody in class who's doing the same, that sort of thing. I imagine in the bathrooms, um they have them right out.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
It's a totally different place now though with the phone rule, whether it's filed a hundred percent or not. I think we.
That's what they're saying.
In that atmosphere, it's schools totally different.
That's what they say.
That is a positive test.
Yes, so, you know, work to do, but, but we've come along.
I think the nature of the beast is that it dips as the year goes on and then we get a hard reset after the summer. And I expect it, because this is the first year, it's gonna be, but every year it's gonna get better and better and it's gonna right back up in, in the fall again, I think, when kids are in and you better really, you know.
You're saying, you're saying even better in the fall.
Yeah, I think it kind of peaks at the fall and slowly, you know, declines as, as things go on, but I think each year it's gonna get better as far as less phones, so and I, so I, I agree with Rich that it's a vastly different, but better.
Well, and when ninth graders, when this year's ninth graders are seniors, they will have never had experienced having phones.
Being permitted.
Having permission.
Yeah.
Totally, right? It's a little hard for the seniors who have had three years of having phones to, to make that transition. And the good news is it's, it's becoming super common across schools and cross states, so that's great.
I think New York just did it across all state, right?
They're about to do it.
Yeah. I think the state of New York is doing it like this.
It's part of their flagship.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Um, okay, keep moving on. All right. The tenants, um I've mentioned this before, it continues to be a real challenge. Um we're gonna continue to talk about this. I don't have anything specific to report right now. Um but um had the last couple of meetings with the department coordinators, we've talked about this as it relates to all manner of things. Um and we're gonna start a couple of committees working on it. We're also working on it at district level. We're beginning to work on it, so um we recognize the challenge it is, parties, absences, all of it, and um and start trying to turn it around. Um with regard to strengths, I've spoken about this before, but I wanted to uh again bring, bring to light the work that the Monument Mountain High School Council has been doing around diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. We've been focused on this throughout the year in our discussions and we've implemented a few actions that we hope will um increase our students' sense of belonging and inclusion, but also their awareness of understanding cultures and differences. Uh things that we have accomplished include a belonging inclusion survey administered to our teachers and our students. We use as a benchmark of where we are in spring twenty five. Uh and then um in administering the survey again over time, we're gonna obviously have a um an understanding of how we are improving as we take action and follow those surveys. Um we're, we're sort of culture awareness events, which we, which will be for our entire student body. We're optimistic that we'll be able to have our first one before the end of the year and moving forward, we're hoping to host one each quarter. We're in talks with the Collaborative for Educational Services out of North Hampton to work with us on how we might improve our teaching and support our interpersonal work with students to instill in them a greater sense of belonging and inclusion. Um this is not only vitally important, um but it also has the added benefit of a positive impact for learning, uh on learning for students. I just mentioned this before, so pardon me for being um dumb in here. Our solid academic experience committee has worked with their advisor Jamie Downer to conduct several conversations in advisories to create a presentation for faculty owners on his designation. We're looking to um learn what is working and what is not. On Wednesday the seventh, the students are gonna present their findings to our faculty at a faculty meeting on what they uh have found to be challenging and rigorous and enriching academically, as well as what they would like to see us improve in this same regard. Um and I just, when I think about SAB, to me, this is like this, this is beautiful work. You know, I love it, I love it that it's their voice, I love it that they're talking to our faculty, I love it that they're saying we want more of this and, and don't, and improve that area over there, so very excited about that. Um we received funding from, uh long ago, but now we're, we, we're almost there with, with this event, but we received funding from the Berkshire County Foundation on Community Engagement to Host a Speaker Series. Um those of you who have been around know the Downhill Speaker Series, um maybe, maybe not Al Gore, but we're, we want to get back in the game. Um and uh before our next, before or at our next school committee meeting, we'll provide more information on this. We're very excited about that as well. I want to thank Peter Dillon for his leadership and support on both, um all of these, either the um school council, um the, the actions that we want to take and, and what it will take to implement them, as well as Speaker Series, so I appreciate that, Peter. Um and then I just wanted to mention, we have a big day on May twenty second. We have, the, the spring is nuts with testing, with events, and it's just so busy. Um I, I got back from spring break going away and uh and it just feels like, oh my God, we're moving real fast now. And um and things are just falling from our fingers, but on May twenty second, we have um three different events happening on that day. We're gonna have our Student and Adult Advisory Board retreat. Um the Burke twelve, Porch River Graduate Berkshire Student Voice Summit. And we will have a school visit by Spring Point, a consulting gathering based through the Bar Foundation. But we hope to get their feedback on our work throughout the year and ideas for the path forward. So it's a really big day for us, a lot going on, but, but great stuff, so.
Good, thanks so much.
Questions, comments?
Um is the Special Olympics at my.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it's on the seventh.
May seventh, okay.
So that's, that's a really remarkable thing.
Yeah.
And if you haven't had a chance to go, like a strong leverage to go, it gets going in the morning with the parade and some law enforcement folks run from Stockbridge to the school uh with like a tourist relay. Uh it's great and, and a, a lot of our students participate and people from all over the county participate. And then um um uh classes do a really remarkable job of making posters and cheering for their classmates at all different grade levels. So pretty much the whole district is out with the Special Olympics cheering on uh the, the Special Olympians. Uh and uh i- it's remarkable and in their, their all sorts of events. Um uh throwing things like shot put, softball, stuff like that, uh running, walking races, uh long jump. Uh on and on. I, I really, uh it, it's remarkable and moving and I really encourage people to, to try to get there if you can.
Is there actual schedule?
It's not sitting, it's really early.
Yeah, yeah, wait a minute. I, 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 I can send it around. I, 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 often I get there at eight, but I think officially it starts at nine. The one thing I will share is parking can be a little tight. Um so either get there early or park at the uh elementary school or in the extra spots we have on Monument Valley Road and, and, and walk over. Cause the, the first lot fills up, then like the practice field in front of the school fills, fills up, everything fills up, but, but that's a good problem, yeah.
Jason, I just want to thank you again for, for bringing that up. It was on my, there's, there's so many things that I forget, but on a personal note, you know, I have a son with Down syndrome, he's gonna be there on that day. You know, and I, I've visited uh Taconic, Oconna, Oconna when they hosted years ago. And it was the same thing, Peter, it was like so many students uh were involved and it was just thrilling and just um affirming and just a beautiful event.
It's the best thing any member of the Kennedy family ever did.
And so, you know, and so we get to have it at our school.
Well, just pray for sun and no rain on Thursday.
Well, we've had the whole range, right? Nineteen, so hot, it's, custodians got walk cases of water and we've had like thirty-eight and freezing rain. So it'll be great, yeah. Thank you, everybody.
That's great.
Jacob?
Yeah, make sure. Be safe.
Ariel, yeah, I'm sure it was right, both ways when you're leaving this room right now.
Put those goggles on.
Oh, by the way, if you know we've had any um fatal casualties through the assassination, I have no idea what's going on.
That's, that's like pause hold deniability on that, that program at high school. Somebody should have told you that when you got here.
When I heard senior assassinations, I thought, I gotta go ahead and peel the AARP sticker off. Rough times. Uh it's nice to be here, everybody. Nice to see you. Um apologies for, for my absence from last meeting. Um I was honored and thrilled to attend, as were some of you, the uh, the, the annual Shakespeare performance of our seventh grade in Shaking Co. Um they did Macbeth. I've seen a lot of Shakespeare in a lot of different places. This was really special. Um kids who during the school day are outrageously big personalities sometimes shrink on the stage. And sometimes kids that I've done a hundred and fifty days with and have not heard a word out of their mouth are huge on stage. And it was really the magic of theater and it was wonderful. And I don't think there was a free seat in the house. It was, it was amazing and we're thankful to, to Shaking Co. as always, to the families for supporting this. I think every single student except for one uh made it to the evening performance. And I know I, I worked with that student and it just couldn't happen and uh it was wonderful and our kids were terrific.
I would, I can just start my.
Yeah, please.
I was shocked.
Yeah.
I mean, it was really just to see kids, I mean, I'm ha- having a kid that I didn't think was gonna rise to the occasion, but they all did.
It was remarkable.
New English language learners, it was like.
Yeah.
It was wonderful.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. It, it was really a special night. I, I am like kicking myself that this has been happening all these years.
And the kids were such a lot when they left, they were just like electric. It was really, really wonderful.
It was a huge deal. Thank you for sharing that. Um last week was National Administrative Assistance Day. Um this upcoming Friday, tomorrow is lunch, uh school lunch hero day. And next week is Educator Appreciation Week and National Nurses Week. Um it's, it's nice to have all of these celebrations of wonderful school people who actually make things happen and actually do the work uh all at once. And we're grateful to all of our folks at DuBois throughout the district and even out in the community that do these jobs to uh, to make our schools great places to learn and grow. Um the DuBois PTO, the newly founded DuBois PTO is doing a host of activities for Educator Appreciation Week and we're really grateful. And uh we're, we're just, they do some wonderful things for us this year and we've had a nice partnership. And CAPE, which is our Latino Parents Group, is providing a Monday Latino Community Testing Lunch for all of us at DuBois. And we're all really excited and really grateful for that, uh for, for, for that, um what I'm sure is going to be a delicious edition of Educator Appreciation Week. Um as Christopher said, it's a really busy time of year, but it's, it's a time of year that's like wonderfully busy. There are times that aren't so wonderfully busy, but, but these, these times are wonderfully busy. Among that busyness, on Wednesday, May seventh, our uh Spring Porus Concert is taking place. On Wednesday, May fourteenth, our band and our orchestra concerts are taking place in the gyms and we will have, thanks to our librarian Jennifer Garen, we will have uh uh a pop-up Scholastic Book Fair in the lobby before each of those events. There's seven to eight thirty or seven to nine o'clock. So uh I hope you feel free to attend. Love to see you there. We're grateful to everyone for their time, patience and work to, to actually do the MCAS well and grateful to our hardworking students for doing their best on MCAS. Um and more about MCAS later in the challenges. Uh a, a big thank you to the Northborough and Southborough Regional School District for working with us and for sharing some of their work, really impressive work around belonging. Uh including sharing with us a, a toolkit that they've developed called the uh, the Belonging Toolkit. As we continue to make belonging empathy and working to better understand ourselves and everybody around us, a real foundation of every piece of the work that we do at DuBois, uh because we know that a great education is only built on positive affirming relationships among uh adults and kids and our communities. Um thank you for mentioning Special Olympics. We are super excited. Um like selfishly, I am excited about seeing uh, uh another generation of Lee kids there. Get to see my Graylock kids, Pittsfield kids that I know, our own kids. Um and it's just a wonderful event. If you've never been, um it, it is just amazing. And I think, you know, as, as we're discussing Special Olympics, I'm, I'm sure all of you or many of you saw Anne Marie Commerford's obituary in the newspaper, a, a kind of a, a legend around these parts and certainly three decades worth of, of really roll up her sleeves leadership uh in Special Olympics. And um what a, what a tremendous loss to her family and a tremendous loss to the community. And uh and her legacy will certainly, her name and her legacy will live on through uh this, this amazing Special Olympics movement that we have here in the Berkshires, thanks in large part to her and her efforts. Um challenges, it has been fascinating for me um stepping into a principalship to see the actual MCAS at work on the ground. From, from a principal uh in building level educators um perspective. The scale of what MCAS does and means to school operations, I, I have forgotten in the nineteen years that I've been a superintendent. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to see it from, from that level again. The time and energy that go into MCAS from every level of the district, starting with the district office, but really particularly our technology colleagues. The entire MCAS is online now and there are weeks and weeks of prep work that our technology department has to do to have our machines ready to absorb that work and do that work. And we started weeks ago getting our enrollment, um our student lists ready and all of the nuances and the accommodations. And uh it, it just strikes me that um, and I am very pro MCAS because we get good information from it. You know, we get good information from it about our students, but, but I think we get really good information about the curriculum that we're teaching, the way we teach it, the, the timing of it. And um the job that we're doing as educators, just as valuable as what we learn about our students.
And have exams occurred or?
Uh they are occurring as we speak.
And when do you get this feedback? When do you see scores and data and?
August, early September. Um so it's, it's not like a lot of testing nowadays where you do it and it's pretty instant feedback. It's, it's several months later. Um uh I have to say though, it, it strikes me that the, the efforts and the impact on schools uh are well out of proportion with the actual value of the test. Um the, the, I guess in simpler terms, the juice is just not worth the time, effort and cost of the squeeze uh at this point in time. And I will tell you that I doubt there are, are a group of people in the state that are as aware that the MCAS doesn't count in high school for graduation anymore. I doubt there is a group in the four, uh, uh, a group of people in the state that know that better than our eighth graders who, who could teach seminars on, on that fact. Um so, you know, I, I do hope that the state at some point uses this referendum that eliminated MCAS as a graduation requirement and takes a step back and looks at um the impact on, on education in the spring, particularly of schools. I mean, we are going to be testing at DuBois through May twentieth. I mean, we are going to be testing at DuBois through May twentieth. We started in mid-April and we will be testing through May twentieth. Every grade, math, science, ELA and eighth grade civics.
How do you though, and this is a more than one beer conversation.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you evaluate performance in the absence of MCAS?
I, I think the way we did for the first one hundred and fifty years of American education, which is trusting well-prepared educators to, to evaluate and measure the progress of their students. And again, I, I am not anti-MCAS and I speak only for myself, not, not for DuBois or the district in this case. I just think there are more efficient ways and ways that require less time and energy away from actually educating children rather than taking weeks, hours and weeks to measure that effectiveness and then really not getting the feedback back in time to actually make constructive substantive changes in time for the upcoming year. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's simply a system that is just, you know, it used to be that the state spent fifteen, twenty million dollars on a UPS contract to ship paper tests all around. Now it's, it's software providers and it's, and it's just a, it's a lot of energy and a lot of treasure that goes to what I think is an increasingly questionable measure. And, and if you go back to, to the beginnings of MCAS like two thousand and one, what that first year of MCAS told us is that middle-class kids with well-educated parents tend to do super well. The further you are from that sort of what is established as a high-performance norm, the less likely you are to. And it's, and it's a lot of time and effort and energy to, to get the same message for, for, for a thirty-year or a twenty-year period.
And Bill, maybe you do it every other year. You have shorter tests that correlate highly with the longer tests.
Lots of ways to, to make it more.
Often people talk about the MCAS data as autopsy data because you get it after the, the patients pass, right? If, if you could get the feedback in a way that could actually impact learning and teaching in relative real time, not in three to six months, but in one to two weeks, then, then it might be really valuable.
And if it's online.
You, you should be able to do that.
What is the problem? They don't know the bureaucracy.
Lots of work for our new commissioner to, to wrap his head around and, and take a look at. And then finally, under challenges, although this is a challenge with a gift attached to it, as most challenges are. You know, obviously twenty-first century after-school programming and, and summer programming is, is, is a, in many ways, a very powerful program that a bureaucratic, really difficult program for any district to keep and sustain. Particularly any district that's not really an urban district with, with several staff members who are just fully committed, full-time, year-round to collecting the data that's related to that. So I think our time in Berkshire Hills being a twenty-first century learning community is coming to, to a close most likely. But we're very grateful for the district's support to run a, a small-scale, but we think powerful program still this summer. It will be a three-week program. It will be for kids from Muddy Brook and from DuBois. I believe that we are hosting it at DuBois and we're really happy to do so. And we're grateful for the support from the district as, as those funds are kind of finalized and we use the rest of them to do one more summer and, and, and work actively with a team of really dedicated educators to, to figure out how do we continue to provide these experiences for kids and provide the, the care that the time gives for families so they can work in an affordable and meaningful way.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. And we'll come back at our next meeting on the, on the fifteenth to, to share our recommendation for that one.
Thanks, everybody.
Good evening. I love going last. Okay, so some really fun stuff around belonging at our school. It's an elementary school, so it figures, right? Today was May Day. The local garden club came and worked with our kindergarteners to plant pansies out in the front of the school. And it was just, you know, adorable to see the littlest of our kids working with people from the community. And that was awesome. Our pre-K and EK students recently went on, it's field trip season. You guys know that, right? It's field trip season. Every other day there's a field trip. Just recently, our pre-K and EK took a field trip to Hancock Shaker Village where they got to see the baby animals. Again, another just adorable scene. We also had a grade two concert where heroes were recognized. So our first responders were invited and they came and the songs were dedicated to them also. A sense of community and belonging, you know, reaching outside of our school was really wonderful. I mean, for that, I do want to thank our custodians because they are so patient with putting up the chairs because we do it in gym. So it's, the chairs go up and the chairs come down and the risers go up and the riders come down and the chairs go up. So they're always wonderful and willing to do absolutely anything we request and so we're very grateful for that. After our break, we had a review assembly, which we often do after we have a break, to remind our students of the expectations of Muddy Brook, of which are to be kind, to work hard and be responsible. And that was a really wonderful assembly. Our second grade also presented at that assembly about how to be kind to the earth because it was Earth Week. And so that was also really powerful and, and wonderful. Additionally, some very good news for us at the elementary school is that Prism Two came out, a grant that Desi is, has, is gonna have. So we will apply for that. That would be available, make, if, if we got it, it would make funds available for us to eventually buy an ELA curriculum. Which, as you all know, we, I have been working on that for, for a good part of this year and last year.
And that's to replace what was.
We don't currently have a knowledge-building curriculum. The only, the curriculum that we have at the elementary school is the Phonics and Phonema curriculum, which is pre-K through three. And there's no knowledge-building piece to it. So there's no continuation of building knowledge that meets the standards of Massachusetts around social studies, science, learning to write, learning to comprehend, all those things which a core curriculum would do for us.
And how, how long have we lived with this? With being inadequate?
Well, actually, I, I wouldn't.
I mean, that's what it sounded like.
This is, this is the piece that we have in the budget that we cut out?
Yes.
I realize, but.
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that we have been living being inadequate.
I, I take that back. It does sound like what we're working with and have been working with, and I realized that was impetus for getting a new program, is not great.
Well, I think really.
Continuous, if it isn't building knowledge, I think you said.
Yes.
Sounds like it's, we're not doing.
I, I think, look, the, the struggle of curriculum in any school system is you have one for a moment in time and it seems like a good one. And then some number of years down the road, ways of thinking about learning and growth and development change of the curriculum potentially is misaligned with the, the best scientific thinking, hopefully, right? And there's all another thing about reading and what was going on with that. So, so even in my relatively short time here, which is long in some contexts, the, the elementary school has had multiple curricula, right? But so this is just a progression, a progression of it.
So that would be, we're, we'll definitely apply for that. And, and hopefully be able to work with the state on making sure that we, you know, get a curriculum that meets our needs. And then one of my really amazing pieces of news is that we had four of our students tested out of WEDA, which is the state test for students that are English language learners. That is not easy to do, test out of WEDA. We had two fourth graders test out of WEDA and two second graders test out of WEDA. One of our, one of them got a perfect score, which is really amazing. Yeah, it makes me very proud of the work that we're doing in our school and of our multi-language learner teachers. And it's, it's really wonderful. Yeah. Looking ahead, we have a bike rodeo this weekend on Saturday between ten and twelve. If you want to come and learn how to ride a bike horse or fix your chain. And then on the sixteenth, we have third and fourth grade concert. And then we did bring Mud Day back, so Mud Day is gonna happen on May seventeenth, which will be really fun. And then we do have our band and orchestra concert is on May twenty-eighth at seven o'clock. And if anybody wants to talk about data and assessments like, like the MCAS, I love talking about that stuff. So just let me know. It's all my favorite stuff. Yeah, good stuff.
Yeah, thanks. So I just have a couple other little ones. We're keeping an eye on what's happening in Boston. It sounded like today there was some movement on a supplemental budget for this current year. And then the Senate's expected to release their budget next week on May seventh. So the, the governor, the House and the Senate, and usually it increases at each point. So we're, we're keeping a, a careful eye on that and I'll share some updates on it. We mentioned the Special Olympics coming up also on the seventh, which, which should be really good. An urgent to go. And then the last thing is, we worked a lot over the break and Donna Denisco and her team and I submitted a really big grant to help supplement the high school project. So it's a CEC Greenworks grant and we are asking for five million dollars, which if it works out, but I'll, I'll share my hourly rate with everybody. But, but seriously, I think it was a really good application. We won't know until they read it. We hope to hear by the middle or end of June. And we also got some help from a neat person at the Berkshire Regional Planning Group who read it more from like an editor's perspective and had the, the rubric and the standards that they were looking at it and, and then made some like very fine detailed edits or recommendations for us that we, we incorporated.
So who's the, who's the grant application to?
It's CEC Greenwork. So it, it's a, it's a local group that I think is, is connected to the utility companies that gets money from them and maybe the Fed and, or Feds and the state. And, and they're really focusing on energy and sustainability. So our particular spin on this was around the, helping afford the expense of, of installing ground source heat pumps as, as the primary mechanism for heating and cooling our building. And, and this would significantly defray some of those costs.
So. William, that's a huge.
A big grant. They don't run a lot of five million dollar grants, right? It's a, it's a, I mean, probably.
But they've made grants that size.
Yeah, and what's interesting about this is, and Steve is really helpful in it too, but they have this pot of money. It's limited. It may not get refilled. You need to be at a certain point and not too far behind or too far ahead. So we're within the, the window and, and you could probably count the number of school districts in Massachusetts on two hands or maybe three hands or in that window, right? Like, like you, you have to not yet have started construction, but be very close to starting construction. And there's a two or three-year window. So it, it, and it was funny, this one we just, I get a lot of emails and I looked at this one. I think, ooh, this looks relevant and I shared it with Donna and she's like, yeah, let's look into it. And we attended a webinar, we talked to them, we answered some questions and, and put it together, so.
Good luck, right?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a big one.
Thank you. Good work.
Yeah.
It is.
I'll let you know. And April break's a good time to write things like that because the phone's not ringing. So those were sort of the, my updates. We don't have any discreet grant approvals or donations this meeting. What I would like to do is, is talk through a little bit this memo that I prepared. And again, sorry that I just got it to you today, but I edited some around school choice. So, so once a year, we're required or really you're required to vote on whether we want to continue school choice or not. So this, my, my strong recommendation is that we do and I'll explain in a sec why and then respond to questions. But, but this, this memo is written really with, with two things in mind. One is to give you context to make an informed decision. And the other, as, as we go to a high school project and other possibilities, is to, is to be responsive to misinformation and things that are misstated or, or opinions that, that are, that are based on incomplete data. And, and to have something that, that, I wrote it for you, but I also wrote it for the public broadly.
How can you publicize this? Does it go up on the website?
It'll, it'll go up on the website, hopefully.
It's up there now. Well, you should, you should include it in our, in the Google.
It's in the patent already. But, but, but I'll, and I'll get to this at the end of the meeting, but, but town meetings are coming up. And, and the first one is in Great Barrington on Saturday and then West Stockbridge on Monday and then Stockbridge a couple of weeks out. But, but at each of those meetings, when I speak, I'll, I'll share some of this because it's important. And, and then if, if the stars are aligned, the, the local media will pick up on this and also share some of it. So the, 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 the big thing is.
You, you're gonna be asking for a vote at the end of this, correct?
I am.
Do you want to discuss the memo first and then, and then, or do you want to put motion on the table and address the memo in the context of that discussion? Either way is fine. I don't really, I don't think it makes a difference, but just so people know, we're, we're intending to vote on this tonight.
Right, so if it's okay with you, what I.
Why don't you present what you want to do?
Well, why don't I sort of walk you through the memo? Respond to any questions, then somebody can make a motion and, and then, and then we'll, we'll go forward. So, so the big thing, and there's lots of confusion around this. Ki- kids move around in Massachusetts in schools in really four or five different ways. And there's lots of confusion, e- even with people that work in education, on the difference between choice and tuition, right? So in, in simplest, and then each of these ways that kids move around is tied to a, a unique time and a unique political context when, when this vehicle was created. And the ones that were created longer ago, the base rate was much lower. And the ones that are more current, the base rate is much higher. So choice is if somebody lives in Massachusetts and they want to go to a school that's not their home school, right? So they apply through choice and we do a lottery. And there's only one preference that's allowed by state law in the lottery and that's connected to siblings. So if you have an older brother or sister that's already in the school, your, the siblings go through a first-level lottery because the notion is to keep families together. And then, and then everybody else goes through a second-level lottery. The, the money that's attached to choice is five thousand dollars plus any additional cost for special education, right? So if, if a kid has an IEP and they need a para or they need a teacher or they need speech therapy, we can charge a little more for that, but the base rate is, is five thousand dollars. And that hasn't changed since nineteen ninety-three, right? So that's a problem. Um, the political reason why it doesn't change is, uh, i- in the system, there are districts that take in more kids through choice or that, or that send out kids. And some districts are sort of seen as, as winning in that thing and some are seen as losing. Politicians are elected to represent all of those districts. So it's hard for them to say, I'm gonna stand to increase this by $10,000 because half of their constituents would be excited about that and half of those constituents would, would run them out of office.
And is it paid by the $5,000 by the town or the school district?
I- i- it's, it's interesting. So it, it, in the case of, of towns, it's paid by the towns. In the case of regional districts, it's, it comes off the cherry sheet. So it, like, it comes out of the, the budget of the sending entity. Sometimes the sending entity is a regional district and it comes out of their money there to get from the state. Sometime it's, it's a standalone town and then it comes out of the town.
So the state does a balance adjustment on a chapter 70 money that comes from that. So they account for the whole thing and, you know.
Right. So I mean, to make it really concrete, if, if a student came from, um, Lenox, it would come out of the Lenox Town Budget, 'cause Lenox is a town district. If it came, if the student came from Sheffield, it would come out of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, 'cause Sheffield's part of that.
Okay.
Right? So, so that's one one. Um, the second way are, are tuition agreements, a- and these are locally negotiated and they're for towns or regions that end before, really, uh, uh, earlier than, than the end of a student's schooling. So Farmington River, which is Otis and Sandersfield, ends in sixth grade. So they have a tu- tuition agreement with us for seventh through 12th grade. They also have one with Lee, um, maybe the, I think they just have two. Uh, Richmond ends in eighth grade. They have tuition agreements with us, Lenox, uh, and Pittsfield. Um, and again, those amounts are, are locally negotiated. Uh, a- and that amount is significantly higher than the choice amount, right? Ours ranges in the 11 to 13,000 dollar range. Uh, for a long time, they were much lower a- and we worked very hard. Maybe now as many as 12 or 13 years ago.
I was just, I was, I think it was 10 years ago.
10 years ago.
Maybe 11. I was just on the committee.
Right.
So maybe, maybe plus 12.
Yes, to, to increase those, right? A- and a bunch of them had increases of 5% a year. It's still 5% on a smaller amount, but, but, but that's getting higher. Um. The, the third one, and this is interesting, are C V T V or vocational programs. Um, those get to charge a, a much higher rate. And they also charge the, uh, the cost of tuition. These though are charged to the sending towns, not the district. So there are a handful of kids that live in Great Barrington. There are two that are in Stockbridge that are attending to Conic High School at Pittsfield for a vocational program. And the sending towns pay, uh, the tuition amount plus they pay, uh, the shared cost of transporting those students, right? And in some ways, like the van to take four kids is $60,000 for a year, which is even more than at least one tuition rate a- and very close to, to all the kids that are tuitioning there. Um, one of our opportunities is we expand our programs is if kids wanted to tuition into our vocational programs and they're not coming through an existing tuition agreement, right? So a new ninth grader came to the high school and wanted to do the automotive program, we will be able to charge their sending school the vocational tuition rate. Uh, so that's a.
And don't we get dozens and dozens from Southern Berkshire on that basis? Uh. For C V T V?
Yes. Not dozens and dozens, but, but some. Um, so, so this could be a really interesting way to help underwrite some of the costs of the, of the vocational.
And I'd like, when we, when next time these tuition agreements come up, you know, we currently have two rates, a regular rate and then a special needs rate. I would like to negotiate a vocational rate in those two. I don't know if that'll happen. That's an idea.
Yeah, yeah. So, so then the last one and the most current is the, um, they're both virtual and, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a tight pointer. Virtual and charter school, that's second vocational and number four, I, I should take, I'll strike. Um, so students can attend virtual or charter schools. And the cost of those programs, which are more current, range in the 13 to 25,000 dollar range. But we, we don't right now have, I think, anybody going to a charter school, uh, which is great. It's sort of a proximity thing, right? So the one charter school in Berkshire County is up in, in, uh, uh, North Adams, Adams on that line. Uh, it's, it's sort of far for our kids to go. At, at different points, we've had people in, in virtual schools that sort of hit a peak during COVID. Um, and, and I don't, maybe we have one student in one of those now, but that's, that's the fourth one. So the big thing around all of this is, um, you have a choice, and I'll go into some more about the money of it, but we have to let kids choice out, right? 'Cause that's their right. Uh, but we should let kids choice in because minimally it covers our potential expenses or losses if somebody chooses out. And then additionally, um, it could, it, it could really generate some revenue. The, the argument we're making is, is this incremental cost one. So if I'm paying to hire a teacher and keep the lights on and the heat and there, in this example, 16 kids in the classroom, adding four additional kids, it almost does nothing to the cost, right? There, there, there are four more. If I lose my mind and I add 16 more, then I might have to hire a second teacher and then maybe we break even, right? And that's really not what I want to do. Uh, but, but if, if I take four and four and four and maybe another four, i- i- it, it could work out. Uh, we monitor really closely. Um, the, the mistake that some people make is they take the, the total budget and they divide it by the number of kids and then they say it costs $28,000 to educate somebody and somebody's getting a free ride 'cause they're paying $5,000, right? I acknowledge there's a $23,000 difference, but the difference to educate the kid, the additional kid isn't $23,000. Um, a- and, and that's really, uh, that's really the, the, the crux of it. Uh, i- in sort of higher level numbers, uh, in school choice, we bring in, uh, $1,250,000 a year. Um, and, and in, um, in tuition, about 725, sometimes 750. So, so using the number of $2 million, this reduces the assessments to the three tenths by $2 million. And to Great Barrington, it's almost a million and a half. Uh, for Stockbridge and West Stockbridge, it's, it's just around a quarter of a million dollars. That, that's, that's big money, right? And, and, and one way to think about this is if you take the average teacher salary, uh, which we're for the moment using is $85,000, uh, right? This, the, this impacts dozens of, of potential positions, right? And, and, and it lets us do things that in, in other contexts we might not do. For a, a small district that we have three, soon to be four vocational programs is a big deal. That we have a, a, a band, an orchestra and a chorus is a big deal. Uh, that we have two hu- high school, two full-time art teachers at a high school is a big deal. And, and on and on and on, right? All, all the pathways, uh, all of that. Um, I, I, as I got carried away, I figured out a cool way to generate a table and it shows better online or with your, uh, reading glasses on. Um, i- in this one, the state uses, uh, school choice, but then they use tuition, which muddies the waters. Uh, but, but this is really school choice. This goes back to 1996. Um, and, and you, you can see the, um, uh, the, the shift over time and, and, and where we are now. Um, I like to think, and, and I know this to be true, that kids come to us, they're voting with their feet, right? They know they're gonna get a high quality education and, and they're, uh, and they're choosing to do that. Um, and, and there's some districts that have the opposite of this, right? That, that, that they're losing twice as many kids as they're getting. Uh, and, and I'm glad, I'm glad we're not in that circumstance. Um, so, um, w- we work really hard to, to carefully monitor this. We're, we're very deliberate. Uh, each year when I get the, uh, the applications, we, we look uh, and we see where we're at and, and where it, it makes sense and there's space. Uh, we leave a little space for unexpected people to move in, uh, in, in the summer a- and then we occasionally go to our waitlist. Uh, a- and there's also something, and I think maybe only Rich and Bill were involved, maybe Jason. Uh, there, there was a moment when we thought th- this was a bad idea and we sort of turned off the faucet, uh, and.
Financial devastation.
A- and it was just a failed experiment, right? We, we learned that, uh, we drove a lot of people away. We kind of reminisced with some other stuff that's happened.
No reduction in overhead at all.
Yeah, I think in your table, it was around 2014.
Yeah.
It goes down.
Yeah.
Drag.
Yeah. Uh, and it just like, in hindsight, it was just, was, we needed to do it.
Peter's being nice. It was my idea, just everybody knows.
Right? But whatever, we learned something.
Yeah.
Right? We're a learning organization and we learned something. Um, so I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend doing it, it again. Uh, so, I mean, in, in some ways, it's, it's, um, it, the, the, the vote we do every year and, and for many, many years, except that one year, um, th- there's been broad support. I, I think it makes sense and I urge us to continue, uh, uh, doing it. I'm happy to respond to any questions of people.
Um, Peter, I, I wrote you earlier today about my concern. Um, and I'm gonna, uh, address this directly. Uh, there was a letter in the Edge by a Great Barrington resident who cites figures of district per student cost at.
Well, you know, I don't, I, I'm gonna, actually, if, if you're gonna be quoting people, you gotta say who it is.
Okay, uh, Jan Lojic.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, Jan, I didn't mention your name. Um, who cites over $30,000 per student cost, all from Desi, and 255 choice students, which cost the district total of each year 6.375 million dollars. Um, I really feel that from my, um, serving on this board, that that's, that's an erroneous statement. I'd like you to address that because this is now starting. We're looking at a new school project and I've been around long enough to know that if you allow things like this to, to just kind of sit, they come back later to bite you. And we saw that in the first project that was, um, voted down twice with misinformation, distortions and downright lies. And I don't, as a school committee member now, I don't want this to go unanswered. So as a superintendent who's putting forward, um, our rec- uh, a recommendation for choice, this letter is obviously, um, opposed to that. And probably there are others that will go along with this. And I hear y'all were subsidizing other stu- other towns. And how come those towns aren't paying these costs and we are? So.
But I think there's, there's more in this letter than just.
Oh, yeah. And I don't want to get into that because this is what we're talking about, Lisa.
You should get into that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, uh, uh, they're trying to make the point that, uh, that they're challenging the, this school district on performance.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I, I wouldn't, I mean, I think we do need to focus on the choice. I mean, this memo speaks to it, your memo. But there's more in this nasty letter, pardon me.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is nasty, um, that, that needs to be addressed.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I, in the, I, I just offer a separate point that, I mean, I think Peter's given a great presentation on the issue at hand and always does a good job on clarifying issues and anything the school committee wants clarification on, I think he should do. But, you know, we're, we're living in this weird time where, um, you know, anybody with a keyboard has a voice. Um, you know, journalism and the filter and the, and the, and the, and the editorial advice is almost gone, you know? Um, and I, I vacillate between, um, elevating, Bill, Bill listed a list of things that, that are, and his last one was liar. That's where I put this person, okay? And like I, I, do we, are we serving our constituents by using this valuable time to elevate that voice? Or are we better just, just speaking the truth as loud as we can? You know, and we have a public meeting here. Anyone can come. Peter's the most accessible public official you can have. Um, and, and as you guys know from being on the committee, like, you know, um, is, it's, when people choose to sit on the outside, on the internet and write these letters, it just, you know, everyone gets printed in the Berkshire Edge. There's no editorializing. You, you put them in and they go up.
Same with Eagle.
Yeah. And maybe that's fine. I'm not saying it's fine. I, I, I see the, the democratization of, of information, I believe generally is a good thing, but I don't know. I, it feels like if we're spending all the time in this meeting responding to these type of people, the tail is really wagging the dog, you know? Um, uh, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's, maybe it's a, a reframing the question, like, 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 which I think Peter actually addressed with the, the school choice issue a lot in this memo. And there's a lot more in that letter that, that, that could be addressed. I mean, anyone who says our school is unperforming is just, I mean, it's just, it's just nuts, you know what I mean? I mean, you look at.
And, and to degree, and I'll be careful, right? I, I'm a thorough person and, and I, I could have easily written a five-page rebuttal.
Yeah.
Um, and I might even have not sent it yet, but, uh, but the, the, the concern is it, it's pretty easy, uh, to, to cherry pick data, to make false equivalencies, to make comparisons that don't make sense and, and, and to not look at things, right? So an author of, of, a, a letter, uh, compares this to Amherst. There, there are lots of reasons why Amherst is, is not an appropriate comparison, right? It, it's two districts that operate interconnected but separately. So that's sort of the apples to oranges comparison. Um, a- and, and then a key thing when you compare districts i- is to try to look at similar districts, right? So are, are the poverty rates in, in comparable districts comparable? Are the percentage of kids, uh, with special needs comparable? Um, what are the, the economics of the two towns? Now, now, uh, Amherst achieves well in some ways and underachieves in others, right? They're blessed to have, uh, five colleges within spitting distance, two directly in Amherst and, and three within 10 miles of Amherst. Uh, what do we think having, I don't know, thousands of people who are professors and connected to a university does to a school system in terms of, of, uh, expectations and, and, and opportunities, right? But on and on and on. I, I don't, I don't want to go into it all, but, but there's a lot to unpack and.
I agree, but I don't think, I, to leave this out there without any kind of.
Right. Well, so, so he, he, well, I mean, yeah.
I don't spend, I don't want to spend hours and hours on it. I think, and you don't have to go through it on a line-by-line basis. You can, you can rebut very quickly the, uh, misinformation about school choice. And then you can say something to the effect of, there are many other misapprehensions in your letter or in this letter, and I would be happy to meet with you and talk about them rather than go make the five-page letter that goes into anomalies between Amherst and, and Berkshire Hills and all the other BS that's in here.
Yeah. No.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Andy has another question. Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
I'd like, I, I'd like to refocus this conversation, this, I mean, discussion to the item that is on the agenda and make a motion to go forward with school choice for the, uh, coming school year.
Andy has made a motion to accept school choice students for FY28. Andy has made a motion to accept school choice students for FY '26 school year and Bill Voight has seconded it. So we can continue debating that. Does anybody have any questions on that, on the school choice issue? And obviously, anything in the memo, because that all is germane to that topic.
But I just wanna make sure that, I agree with Bill. I don't like this stuff out there. I don't care who posts it. I think that's not, we all have to spend a lot of time.
Well, why don't we, why don't we take that in new business and discuss if there's gonna be an official response to that letter? If that's a better way to go? But I mean, this is kind of like, next to the budget and a couple other things. It's like one of the few formal things you really gotta deal with and, and, you know.
That's good.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
And I have some ideas about that that I'd like to.
Okay, so let's stick with Mr. Potter's motion. So, school choice, questions, concerns, anything? You go around, I have a couple of things, but. Everybody have any?
I think the why of school choice is important. And I think in discussing school choice, the discussion of why we do school choice is not only for the money, it's for the education. And if you are a parent that lives in a certain place for a certain reason and you want better opportunity for your kids, this is the way to do it. And to discuss the cost of it is one thing, but to discuss the opportunity when you move to Massachusetts, this is a fantastic opportunity for any kid and for any family in Massachusetts. And that's what we should be focusing on. I'm so sick of the price tag with everything. I'm sick of the way people turn things and make them into lies. And I think the why of school choice is why we do school choice.
Yeah, I think it's really well said, and I would say the opportunity is reciprocal, right? So somebody comes into our district and they're afforded some opportunity. And some number of people come into our district and they afford our collective district some opportunity.
That's what, I think, I think the benefit is to our kids too.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's.
It's building a football team, it's having a.
The kids learn as much from the kids around them as they do from the teacher at the front of the room. Not that you value teachers, but it's a fact, you know what I mean? And you need full classrooms, you need diverse classrooms with different people, different perspectives. You need the opportunity to offer different types of classrooms. It's, you know, and even if money was no object, we get a one teacher for one kid in, for our three towns, but that would not be a good education, you know?
But I mean, I think that's so well said. What I'd like to do is revise this and stick in a paragraph or two referencing that sort of after the money part at the end before the conclusion.
Well, when you read this, it's very clear. This is like a chapter in a textbook. You're talking about school choice. This is what school choice is. When I read this, when you put this out, and I know that you read on this too, very, very clear to somebody who has any question. So, the lie and the, is it this and isn't that? I'm not interested in that. What is, what is school choice about? It's sort of like, I'm driving to college, I have extra room in my car. You're gonna pay me $5 for a ride, I'm going anyway, my car is going anyway. I would like to have the community of you in my car. I would love to have your $5, it's not gonna cover all my gas, but it's a really nice perk.
But what kind of car do you drive?
I could ride on the top as well.
It's everybody wins. And I think, I think it's a very good analogy for what you put out in this. And I think that it just puts it all to rest. And honestly, I would like to see this, not to enable this discussion more. But we're talking about school choice. This is school choice. The rest of it, whatever the hearsay is, I'm sick of the discussion about school choice. It makes everybody better. And for a parent, you want that for your kids. That's why you send your kids to school. If you cannot find a school for your kids, then you home school. And really, if that's your best bet, that's great. But we have so many great schools and they're so different in so many ways. The social communities, the athletics, everything. And I would just put this as an article, like in the Berkshire Edge. But if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna really be about facts, this is the facts. And that's all I'm interested in with any of it. And whenever we talk about the school, whenever we talk about the building of the school, it's about facts. You know, it's about, this is about education, this is about community. This is what we do and this is why we need here. And this is just one more to those things. So any discussion that has to do with school choice, I think this addresses it and puts it to rest. And anybody who wants to argue with that, I think it answers every single question and finally puts it to rest. If I hear one more time, $5,000 per student, I don't have enough time in my day to address all the questions that come. Honestly, and I'm doing that as much as I possibly can because I'm a huge proponent of the school. And I think we all are. But this is the answer that everybody's looking for. And I would just let it be known because it answers it all. No more discussion, we're done. That's it. This is the reason, this is the why. If you're a why person, there you go. And I'm not, you know, I'm not entertaining other stuff. This is why we do what we do. It makes everybody better, on to the next. That's all I have to say now.
Yeah, Christopher's clapping for you in the back. I'm clapping on the inside.
I think you should write Mr. Voight.
I would be happy to, but you know what? It doesn't have to be a personal thing. It just has to be, I would like to publish this in The Edge. This is what, this is the way the school committee feels. This is why we do what we do. We are a united front, we are about the school. If you wanna look small by telling us we're not doing a good job, that's on you. It is not on us. And if you wanna say to somebody they can't come because they're not paying enough, that's also on you.
Yeah, that's right.
And when everybody's tax bills go up, that's on you. Because that's, I mean, I don't wanna talk about it, you said it's so great and only the money. But without school choice tuition, everyone's tax bills will go up and go up dramatically.
Exactly, and if you're talking, it addresses it all. It says it all and no more discussion. And we don't have to get into talking anymore about it. And if we can do this for every single item that comes out about school, please.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Good kudos on the memo. All right, so we'll go to a roll call vote with that. Steve Bannon absent, Sarah Borla. Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields.
Yes.
William Voight.
Yes.
Andrew Potter.
Hi.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Allison Reed.
Yes.
Sarah Tenetti.
Yes.
And I vote yes, carries unanimously. We'll be welcoming school choice students again next year with open arms and enthusiasm.
Mr. Chair, do I see that, do you pause after every time I vote? I've just noticed that. You take a breath and pause after I vote.
Every time I know you're gonna speak, I get a little nerve, a little breathless.
Okay, okay, I see.
It's his talent.
Okay. So the next one's pretty straightforward and I think fairly easy. Sometime in the fall, I came to you with a request for additional compensation for teachers who are nationally board certified. That's a big deal and a rigorous process and you voted to approve that. There's something similar for nurses and I'm recommending we do the same thing there. The role of the school nurse is increasingly and exponentially more complex, particularly since COVID, but even before COVID, it was a very challenging job. When nurses go the extra mile to earn this national board certification, I think it significantly upgrades their skills and capacity to work with students. At this time, there's one person who's earned that and I would like to recommend that you approve the attached MOU to compensate that person additionally for that thing. And then in future contract negotiations, we might discuss writing. What we typically do is we take existing MOUs and negotiate whether they should be in a future contract. So that's where I'm going with this. The reason the dollar amount's a little less than the other one is because of the length and depth of the experience. So the teacher's one was just longer than the nurse's one. So that's how I ended up with that recommendation.
We have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Bill. Any discussion, questions? Andy and Allison, just jump in if you have anything, otherwise we're gonna move to a vote. All right, roll call vote. Steve Bannon absent, Sarah Borla. Diane Singer.
Yes.
William Fields.
Yes.
William Voight.
Yes.
Andrew Potter. He's playing with me now.
Come back to him.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Allison Reed.
Yes.
Sarah Tenetti.
Yes.
I vote yes, carries unanimously.
Oh, Andy's back.
No, he's still gotta, I mean, even if I mentioned it, he's still gotta come to me. Aye.
So it carries unanimously.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. So the next one, proposed expense reallocation. I'd like to pass over that to our next meeting on the 15th. I think there's some movement with the supplemental budget and I might come back to you with a variation on that in two weeks. And I didn't know that was happening when I initially put that on the agenda. So the next thing, and I'm gonna share this very quickly just to give you an overview. We've been working both with graphic designers and website people on our website work. And I just wanna give you like a hint or taste of where we're coming with school logos connected to some of that. So I'll put them up on the screen. This is a sort of very complicated packet with typefaces and this and that. And it's more for like printers and designers, but there are a couple images. So give me just a sec. No, that's not one of them. Well, maybe let me do this one. So, these are the sort of modern versions. The green one on the left is a new district logo. And then, and then the next one would be the high school, the middle school. And the blue one is for the elementary school. And I'll zoom in on one so you can sort of see it in more detail. So the Spartan had a pen or pencil, books and students in an audience.
It looks like he's riding a wagon.
Yeah, that's interesting. I don't see that, but I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're sharing it.
I mean, Spartans maybe did ride wagons.
This one, a little difference, sort of the commitment to community with the heart and the handshake, music, a similar thing. And then the place where we deviate a little bit is Muddy Brook and they're not the Spartans, but they're the Coyotes. And we thought we'd make everybody Spartans or they're deeply committed to their Coyotiness. And we thought we could have some flexibility and keep that.
That's cool.
So, I think these are sort of clean and neat. Let me just zoom out a little bit.
So the high school's moving away from that Rockwell picture?
No, we will still use that and we're not gonna take it away, but this will be on letterhead, business cards, printed materials, and we'll continue to use the Rockwell thing in some contexts. This is sort of another way of presenting it with mission statements. This is at a higher level in black and white, maroon, and so on and so forth. And then, and then these are, this is sort of interesting. These are inappropriate ways to use the logo from a branding perspective. So they're not, they're not, they're not, these are examples that aren't true to the design. So these are things we would not do. These are colors for, sorry, for the printers.
Wasn't there a move, what kind of move to maroon for all three schools?
There was, and that's something we could revisit. In the context of the coyote, we moved away from that. And if there was really strong feelings about it, we could, the alternative would be to go, in, sorry, turn away because it'll make your head spin. We, the thing to do would be, if we wanted to do maroon for all three schools, we could go back to them and do one color lighter than DuBois' color, but still keep the coyoting. And this is a really hard thing to do. It's even harder to do by committee, right? Because we could end up with like a camel or something, right? So, let me, and I can also have the graphic designers come back. People thought it really made sense for Muddy Brook to be a shade of maroon. I'm happy to propose that as a potential alternative and we could look at it. If people don't feel strongly about it, they have a bit of commitment to blue there. Yeah, so. And again, the next step is like we're gonna give all this stuff to, we've given it all to the website designers and we'll see where that comes up. And I'll run some focus groups and get some feedback. Nothing's done till it's done, but it's moving, moving along. Okay, so thanks for hearing that out. The town meeting dates I mentioned, so Great Barrington is on Saturday at 2:00. That's an unusual day that they're doing as an experiment. And this connects to the other stuff. One of the things, I reached out to the moderator and by custom and tradition, he affords me an opportunity to do a brief presentation. When I'm standing in front of the 400 or so people in that room, I'll share some of the wonderful stuff that's going on, some of our challenges and some of the budget impact. But I'll also explicitly speak to some concerns that have been raised in the community. So in part, Bill, some of what you're talking about, we'll get addressed there. Wes Stockbridge follows quickly on Monday and then Stockbridge is two weeks from Monday. And I'll be sending out reminders to community members and staff to attend each of those, each of those meetings, those will go out tomorrow morning. And, oh, so the MSBA update. Jason, do you wanna share anything about it?
No, I mean, we have our next meeting, monthly meeting, next Wednesday. So two weeks from now, we'll be able to get more of our update, depends on how things are going. But maybe you wanted that.
No, I mean, I think the big thing was the supplemental of that grant and our fingers are crossed on that. One of the other things that came up in the supplemental budget, and I don't understand the potential impact for us, is an additional, I think, $50 million for, not for us, but for schools that are in the MSBA pipeline that may be impacted by rising costs connected to some of the stuff that's going on in Washington. So before our next meeting, we'll try to understand how that might be distributed. But any additional money is always good money.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's going on.
We skipped over update on rural aid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I just say?
Yeah, you say your thing and then I wanted to say something about that.
Yeah, because you mentioned it in the somewhere else. I just wanted to say thank you to anybody who wrote a letter to legislators at my request. Somehow I ended up on the.
uh, at my request. Uh, somehow I ended up on the rural schools hall committee. They associate school committees. And uh, they've been working on, you know, a response to what is not looking good in the budget. Looks like it's around sixteen million for a fight. And not sixty, which is why the request in these letters just encourage the Senate, which hasn't acted yet, but will actually to do sixty million. It should be more than that, but at least sixty would, would be a big improvement over sixty. So just thank you for those letters and we'll see how effective they were. There were a lot of rural schools and there's a lot of engaged people in this, in these meetings who are really keen to go after our legislators and, and give fairness for rural schools.
So it was my little part, and I have notes on this, I just missed it when I was looking at it. Um, we historically have gotten rural aid and we didn't get it this year because the average salary of West Stockbridge grew exponentially. So historically.
Andy had a good year.
Somebody had a good year in West Stockbridge. Historically, it'd been, it had been around like fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then across the three towns, you need to be under the state average, which is right around sixty. Uh, they pull department of revenue data that's a little old. So I think this year's allocation was based on two thousand and one data. And, and it went from fifty-eight to ninety-one thousand and, and that's too much, right? I, I think, I still think it's an anomaly, a data error, reporting error. Uh, I've not been able to prove that, but, but next year's data came out and the number is back around sixty. Maybe it's sixty-one and change. I don't have it open right in front of me. Um, so it's highly likely that we're going to be eligible again for rural aid next year, though you don't know till they run the final numbers and, a- a- and then you don't know how much you're getting till they uh, allocated based on what's allocated at, at the highest level. But, but the folks at, at DESI and DOR are aware that I'm watching it very carefully and um, and um, I am hopeful and I think even they're a little hopeful that we're eligible next year because, because then they stop hearing from it.
Well, that's different than Chapter Seventy.
Correct.
Yes. And under Chapter Seventy, we get thirty dollars per student currently?
Yeah, but, but it, it might end up being a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it was a hundred. I know the governor's proposal was a hundred and seventy-five.
Right.
And the House came in at seventy dollars, I think. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the big things in, in the supplemental budget, and I just read it earlier, so I don't remember all of it exactly, but uh, a- additional reimbursement for special education transportation uh, could come through this year, which would be great, a- and, and a couple other areas. So, so we'll, we'll see where that all ends.
I believe the, the regional transportation rate was ninety-eight percent.
Yeah, that's another one.
Huge, yeah.
That's great. That's gonna, that's gonna like, rough next year.
Yeah.
Right.
If it sticks.
Yes.
Because, I mean, we, we spend almost. Right, so it's, that's big money.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, uh, I think which that's, uh, a- and, and the principals really talked about the belonging and safety stuff. So I think that's it for me.
Subcommittee reports, Paul Seig. Who's Chair Paul Seig? I mean, who's Chair? Oh, I think Steve is, right?
Steve is, yeah.
He's not here, Steve is.
Alright, well, pass on.
That's a sign of lots of things.
Building and grounds.
I haven't met.
Uh, I want to say one thing on building the grounds though. Um, the grounds look really great this spring. I mean, they always do, but maybe it's just because spring took so long to come, but it, it's, it, it really is exceptional.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and so quick, like everything just like went from being one year to like.
Steve's green now.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, super tense evaluation.
Uh, do we?
Next week.
Yeah, I think we're meeting next week. We have a date scheduled.
Finance did not meet, uh, negotiations, I'm sure did not meet.
No.
Okay. Um, do you have any other personal report?
Um, uh, two things, um, little ones. Uh, we, we hired a great orchestra strings teacher, Maria Paul, uh, and we're excited for her to join us. The, the music teachers and principals across the buildings interviewed her. Uh, and she comes to us with great experience. Um, and then Lindsay Segal uh, is coming as a long-term sub in uh, in PE at the, at the high school.
Perfect. Um, I know Sharon couldn't, isn't here tonight. Do you have anything on business operations or not?
Uh, no, but, but we will at, at the next meeting. We also, just to preview a couple of things, um, uh, some teachers from Muddy Brook are going to do a, a neat presentation uh, on, on dyslexia and, and ways we can more effectively screen and support students who may be dyslexic and, and that's a big deal. Um, and then uh, some staff and students from the Railroad Street Youth Project uh, are coming to present on the uh, Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. So that's the, the giant national database of of risk factors and redemptive factors or, or, or proactive factors. Uh, um, and, and that's always uh, thought provoking and, and good to hear. So, so those are coming up um, in, in future meetings. And Christopher mentioned uh, the Spring Point visit and, and some of that work. Uh, and, and he'll likely be coming back with uh, his faculty, maybe in a, in a June meeting uh, to share some uh, updates on, on that work and some of the stuff they're doing around uh, a- around curriculum assessment in rigor. So that should be good.
Perfect. Uh, old business? Anyone in the old business they wanted to take off the table?
I should mention that I've been religiously signing. So. That's maybe how you got on this other committee.
Yeah.
They wanted, they saw your excellent work on the warrants.
Well, we'll be conducting your annual review shortly to, to evaluate your performance, Bill, so be able to keep it up. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for doing that. Thank you. Yes, yes, it's a thankless task. Uh, new business?
Um, I, I'd like to follow what Diane has said so eloquently. I think we need to respond to, to these erroneous um, and, and downright untruths uh, in a statement that is, um, that has all our support and that is put into the Edge, the Eagle, um, maybe in an op-ed, in the Eagle, um.
So do you want to informally instruct Peter to start putting something like that together and?
I would like that, yeah.
But then.
I could get you that letter in about two minutes.
The, the op-ed, uh, is a good format like that for some of them, so. Any other new business from the committee? Al- Allison or Andy, do you guys have anything?
Yeah.
Perfect. Um, I don't have.
But do you want to do public?
I was going to, yeah. Um, so we'll move to public comment. Uh, Peter, I'll let you um, call the, the individuals that have access.
Okay.
If there's anyone.
So if anybody in the public has a que- oh, yeah, James does. Yeah, um, let me.
And just please state your name and your uh, address.
James Garzone, eighty-four North Plaine Road. Uh, thank you everyone, uh, for the great presentation. I love the logos, by the way, so I look forward to seeing that. Uh, just a little bit to the discussion that was being had. I know it's repetitive and frustrating to repeat the same thing, but we know what happened in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, just recently, a couple of years ago or last year regarding the joint of the uh, school districts. If, just we keep on repeating the facts and then we'll see what happens when the school vote comes in, but I, I just don't want that, you know, we're not going to repeat it anymore. We're just going to stop and just say it's about the educational benefit. There has to be a balance between the educational benefit, which has been strong with the economics. So I look forward to the response and I look forward to what Peter has to say. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, James.
Want me to have a public comment on that, Peter?
I think that's it.
Okay, there being, um, there was no written communications received. So with that, the meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.